Good morning, this is the Board of Eastern Union Free School District Board of Education Special Meeting for Wednesday, August 11th. Please be advised the board meeting is taking place in person, will be recorded and posted on the district website at a later date. I'll be needing to order. Please join the pledge. They have a motion to adjourn executive session to discuss matters related to two particular corporate group again. Second, third, all those favor. Sorry, we're going to point to item two now, pretend to change this.
Yes, I was just gonna request the board add public comments to the agenda after we do the discussion.
And did you want to add superintendent comments?
Yes, sure, yes, I could add as well.
Alright, so public comments after both discussion items?
Yes, right, sure.
Okay, I will remind everyone that we have a couple of other stops from other meetings that weren't scheduled, so we're going to be very efficient and right into superintendent's comments.
There are a number of people on board, and so if the time comes that a board member or has to appoint them, time comes that a board member has to go, I think they should be able to go, and so therefore I suggest we do the action items prior to the committee section, so that we can, so that we truly have a forum to accomplish problems that have to be discussed.
Thank you for the clarification, Brandon. Alright, so it will be superintendent's comments, discussion items, items requiring board actions, and public comments. Alright, there you go.
Yeah, you know, I just wanted to talk to the board about every last board meeting, the board talked about public comment and slowly putting limits on that, so I did a survey of the other local superintendents, every response that I got brought from the various superintendent's and their postsies was that they do put limits on public comment, which typically is about three minutes, so I just wanted to put that out there so that we have that information, I don't think we have any discussion of thoughts about that at this time, but I know the board was interested, so it does appear that having a school that responded or many does that, so would you?
I think especially given our early morning, we have many early morning meetings, we have not to this point had public comments at early morning meetings, we have an early morning meeting schedule, I think we should give it a go.
I think it's appropriate in any of our meetings to have, I think three minutes is appropriate, succinct, people can get their message across, you know, if that'd be appropriate.
I agree, I also would like to mention that originally on our agenda, public comments was not part of it, so, and it's a work day for many people, we were not aware of public, although it was going to be a common today, so I think that today and in the future, it's a big example, districts, I mean around, as you said, Ryan, do limit it to three minutes. Some districts don't even take public comments, it is up to the board to make that decision. I think limiting it to three minutes is recommend worthwhile.
Anything else? Oh, no, thanks.
Okay, alright, discussion items.
Yeah, so we're talking about the reopening of the school, and yeah, we've been waiting for comment from New York State, and we realized last week that they're not going to give us any guidance, that has changed, so there happened some conversations over the last several days with the board of our district superintendent who is representing us at the state level with the Department of Education, and also locally with the area county Department of Health, the area county Department of Health has done a nice proactive job in terms of gathering information from superintendents in regards to reopening the school, that what we would like to see happen, and how they can help to facilitate a smooth transition to getting all kids back, but of course they're going to be weighing the data, and then they're going to make a commitment, reputation to us hopefully within the next few days, also State Education Department has also chimed in, and they are working with industry superintendents to formulate a position that they will be releasing hopefully later this week or early next week, so again, we will be getting some guidance from Commissioner Rosa and the Department of Education, as well as the ECDOH, so once that comes out, that will really help us to move forward, and I appreciate everybody being here today, I know that your schedules are very busy, this is an extra board meeting that we had not intended on having, but I really thought it was a good idea to get together just to talk about state of the world meeting at this point in time, to try to share that with our community, I sent out the class yesterday, again, our position hasn't changed, it's hard bringing kids back full time, K through 12, five days per week, that still is our intention, the one issue that we are facing right now is related to masks, and if we should be wearing masks while we're in school or not, we were allowed for summer school, as we go back two months, it's quite different, we were given direction from the ECDOH that we could make masks optional, so we gave parents the choice whether setting their children to school, whether they wanted to wear masks or not, I did a quick survey of Mr. Moore and Ms. Goibrock are running our summer schools at Parkdale and at the high school, and about 30% of the students were wearing masks at Parkdale, and about 10% of the students were wearing masks at the high school, summer school has gone very well, probably about 100 participants, 100 students, K to 12, and it's split into two groups, we have a K to six group at Parkdale, and we have a seven, 12 group at the high school, there's about 70 kids at Parkdale and 30 kids at the high school, and so things have gone very well, we've had a couple of cases, but no spread, no contact tracing, and so things have moved along very nicely now for, so we only have 70 students or 30 students in the building, it's not like having 1,750 students that we will have on opening day, so there's a big difference, but I'm very grateful that we had the opportunity, things were moving in a positive direction, the infection rate is very low, now unfortunately we're seeing a surge of variants, how that is impacting our community directly is still a work in progress, and so we're seeing the numbers increase, it seems to be trending in that direction as we move towards opening school, we have about a little less than a month before we come back with students, so those are the kinds of questions that I have to answer prior to opening the school, right now, I don't have any additional information unfortunately, from what I shared with you already, what I've talked about today, I don't know if any of the administrators have any comments or anything that they would like to add, I think that kind of covers it, so that's going to be the question for us, is that, you know, we're going to come back at three feet of social distance, as we did in the spring, that is basically how, I'll be honest, how an average classroom is set up, because kids are about three feet apart when they're at a desk, so it looks pretty much like a typical classroom, of course, the teachers rearrange the desks and do a series of things as well, but I think we've got a standard 20 to 25 students, that's what it would look like, so the information, I guess, my suggestion would be is that when we make this decision, it's based on the information that we get from the ECDOH, the Department of Education, the Department of Education has been kind of quiet, they kind of turned it over to the governor and the state DOH, but now that they have backed away, Commissioner Rose has become involved, and they will have a position on reopening the school, so once we receive that information, I think that will kind of give us a clear idea, or a clearer idea of what direction we should move in, of course, I'll be honest, I don't want kids to wear masks, I don't think anybody wants, kids or adults, I don't think any of us want to wear masks, but we have always looked to the professionals for our guidance, and what I can say, when I look back at the last 15 to 18 months, we have been successful, our students and staff have said, we've been able to deliver an excellent educational experience for our students, and in spite of all the obstacles that we've dealt with, everybody has put in 150% to make this work, and so that's what I will do, is that through all the ups and downs, all the problems and issues that we've dealt with, I make that the decisions that we've made, while they're not perfect, were in the best interest of our students and people. So, any thoughts on that?
Just a question, aside from the mask issue, is everything else, you feel comfortable, you have been able to make decisions and move forward for reopening the school, in other words, is our staffing adequate, are we able to, have we hired the people we need to hire, and will they be on site, do we have all the decisions regarding social distancing for things like cafeteria and the buses, do we have, have you basically made most of the decisions that are necessary to open school that you feel comfortable with the exception of the mask?
Yes, so we have been working on that part of the process, and I'm going to meet with the task force next week, we met several weeks ago, again, it was just more information, it wasn't a whole lot of dialogue because of the direction that we were moving in, now things have changed, I'm sure there'll be some questions from that group, but yes, what we've been working on is issues around what is school going to look like when we open under like different circumstance, three feet of social distance like we did in the spring, the issues are around the cafeteria and lunch, and they continue to work on that in terms of having enough space and distancing kids when they do remove their masks, or planning for like, I guess what we'd say is the worst case scenario, so if you have to have them six feet apart when you remove their mask, how is that going to look, it's definitely a challenge, but the challenge of the spring is going to be a challenge for the ball that they've worked on it for several weeks.
Well, first they did it in Parkdale in the spring, but not at the high school or the middle school, is all I can say.
We had outdoor dining for our students at the middle school as well, same thing for the high school, so that's how we, because what happened is they were using the gym space, and so once the gym space went away for certain, they had to find alternative spaces, because they all went outside, and that worked well, but again, that may work for September into October, and once we hit November and December, everybody obviously has to keep that in the building.
Well, you had the five day at Parkdale at the end of the year, and you had a good chance to try it, make sure it works, but there's going to be a significant difference at the middle school and high school from what was happening in June, so are we?
So back in the middle school, back in?
Yeah, they were in four days a week.
Four days.
Yes, yeah.
And it was a full population?
But it was a full population, so you're saying that the, it was, towards the end of the year, I forgot, it was not, it was not the Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, so the last, so the only difference between Parkdale and the other buildings was that they did not commit on Wednesday, okay, so that's good, they had a chance to try this out, A-12, in all, in all three buildings, and so what's going to happen in September is something a whole lot different from what they are used to already.
We also talked about that we have to have a plan, plan B, C, and D for hybrid and remote, because we don't know what they have, and people don't want to speak about it, they don't want to.
You have, so you have backup plans?
Yes, we have backup plans, it would case things, we've been in a much more severe direction, so yeah, they're pulling it together.
And the staffing is?
Yep, we've been really working very hard in terms of hiring, there's some new positions that we created through federal pre-funds, and so we're continuing to work on those, but all of the positions that we need to open school will be all in place, I hope before school starts.
Just a couple things, ventilation in terms of our classrooms, we're going to be, we're on our windows, we'll have things that we were doing last year to make sure that.
We talked, talked about air exchange, and how can we increase that to the maximum, so there's this, and Doug can probably speak this much better than I can, but it's the idea of that balance between air exchange and being heat and cool, the air, and so when there's too much air exchange, it gets too hot during the summer, when it's too much air exchange during the winter, it gets too cold, so there's that fine lines who does, you know, is constantly tweaking that to maximize that, and again, in conjunction with, when do we open those doors, keep our doors open, create that ventilation circulation classrooms all.
And I was just going to comment, we may get some type of, state, now that we've had the recognition of Governor Cuomo, I mean, you never know if there might be some change, I wouldn't be surprised if we did see something, so.
Quick question, contact tracing, will that continue, or are we waiting for?
Right now, they discontinued it for the summer, so it's all been, well, they didn't do contact tracing, but what they discontinued is our daily report, every day during the school year, principals were reporting out every single day, this very long list of questions to the DOH, and what they did is they very actively monitored that data, and so they would monitor data, and they see something get skewed, they would, they would intervene, contact us to see what was going on, of course, we contacted them when we had cases, and then they went through the process of contact tracing, which still continues, so that process will continue, so somebody right now is diagnosed, we were examining the contact tracing.
And we're seeing so many more children in Arkansas, where it tries to, personally, my nursing kicks in, and I want to see that continue.
So, but that means last year, parents had to hit the little red button, or green button if their kid was okay, are we doing that again this year?
Yep.
So we will still continue what we were doing last year?
That's what we're just doing right now, and thank you, and that's one of the things, I guess, that's, that's, that's where's the ECDOH to improve from where they are right now, so we have to give that daily screening, budgets, yes, but that may not be the case.
And sports, they're supposed to start by the 23rd, I'm assuming, we're still planning on sports, continuing?
That's, that's going to be ahead of schedule, we haven't received anything from the section, or from the Department of Health that would stop us from moving forward, so we're opening, obviously, sports is going to be starting very shortly, as a matter of fact, probably in the next week or so, and so, yep, we're moving forward as we put into it.
Just, sorry, wait, not at visitor comments, we'll come at the end, thank you.
So of the correspondence, that would receive one stood out for me, and that was with regards to the remote option that's being offered through postsies, that's being offered to students who are directly, you know, and the question was with regards to children who are not, but who live in a household with family members who are, I guess, I won't make assumptions, I'll ask, has that situation been considered, so that those students can be maybe put at ease, and not put in a situation where they feel like they can fulfill their family.
Yes, and so, so when we look at coming back to school, you know, with the current data, excuse me, is that we have all of our students, I think we all agree on that, and so when we look at remote options, make that possible for those students who are immunocomplacent and are at greater risk, these services, those that need, because trying to create like a small nation of people with instruction through the day is almost impossible, and so, but for those circumstances, it's something that I guess we haven't addressed yet, Joe, but absolutely, so. Yeah, I was all work with that particular family that has those needs, and we got comments.
Thank you. Is there anything, Sadie, in other words, those policies have capacity to enable students?
Um, yes, it's my understanding, you know, they're looking for some long-term commitment, because of course they're hiring staff members and all the support staff, the teachers, it's special ed teachers, it's therapists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, all of those things, so it's a very, very involved process, and so that's why they need that commitment to be inspired here, but again, there are those circumstances, you know, there are need, and there certainly will be.
So they won't turn this out, they won't say?
No, 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 no.
Other questions? Thank you for the updates, and thank you. So, Board of Education Committee, I'm in.
Yeah, so last, last time, the board of committee assignments, and you can, you know, the board members serve on a variety of committees and some change, and we talked, I think, about just having outside, outside participation from parents, community members on those groups, and so I think we wanted to have a little bit of discussion around that, and, you know, I know that we talked about, kind of went through quickly last time, and identified, you know, where we think we could reach out, some of the committees don't really let themselves to having outside participation to the nature of the work, but most of them do, and a number of them already, so I don't know if the board wants to have a discussion, kind of fish that out, or any questions?
I think we had, I think what was different at this point was that we had a little bit of confusion in our communication to the community, and when we outlined the committee, we may have neglected to be clear that they were these were board committees, but that community participation is incredibly important, and we always love to be better at our communication and our connection with the community members, so where we have some committees that were not board committees, and interest in the community for those committees, we may need to look, find a new way to approach that, and we have another committee that would work with a little add-on, say the budget and finance committee is, has not been a community inclusive committee due to some of the nature of the work, there's a lot of confidential things that happen in relation to negotiations with unions, et cetera, but they, we have the communication, we have the communications committee, it used to be a subcommittee, now it's just the communications committee, and maybe that has been more community-focused, and maybe we would like to give that a specific budget and finance aspect, so that we can include more community members.
That's a great idea. I think the only one that has confidential information would be the budget and finance committee.
Yeah, there's, there are a number, I think we want to reverse, reverse the conversation and say these are board committees, if we have interest, or we have community members who are specifically experienced in a certain realm, where we haven't included that before, we should look to add those folks in where it's appropriate, right, so I know budget and finance certainly a big topic, and I think that's absolutely where we should be looking to engage folks, we just have to make sure we're doing it appropriately.
So do, so have that the communications committee basically is why you're proposing to make discussion with budget and finance. And that's a great way to get the information.
That's relatively large committee, it's a fantastic committee, what it means, I would suggest that now that the communications committee has not itself a subcommittee, it necessarily we could make a budget and finance subcommittee to that committee, if we have 30 people on the committee, but five are particularly interested in working through budget-related matters, we could meet more frequently in that smaller group, because of a community-based finance committee, but appeal?
I think that makes a lot of sense, what you're saying, without some, there are big ones distracted, confidential, so that gives you an opportunity to separate those and draw up an agenda that is appropriate.
And we keep the flow of the meetings going well enough, there are points where confidentiality is no longer an issue, and you can move on, and you can discuss things, so budget finance and budget season is meeting, I don't know how often that committee meets, it seems like it's weekly, and the communications subcommittee meets quarterly, there could be a monthly option in there, especially.
And Jack, you said that at one point in time, you had this whole long-range planning committee, which was a committee that was related, kind of what you're saying, a subcommittee , that was related to community, parents, community members talk about, just the fiscal position of the district and our long-range plans for operations and access.
That makes, that makes sense.
And we need that subcommittee.
Okay. So we would be re-engaging or relaunching existing committee?
And you could use the same concept, if there were people interested in discussing issues that committee, that other committees were addressing, that were board committees, you know, we have a number of committees that are, Board of Educational, several groups, and so if you have the ability on the communications committees to establish, and since it's large, establish a subcommittee relating to finance, but it might also be able to do a subcommittee for this curriculum. So, so it'd be, that group, since it's large, could be flexible enough for community members to have, to become subcommittees relating to a board of partners of interest to the community, and where the board may be making decisions as we move forward, and they could become advisors to the board of those.
If that's a communications committee, could become umbrella for multiple committees?
Possibly, you know, because the.
Maybe engagement, maybe?
It would allow for, for some flexibility with regard to the issues that we discussed, and focus of those on smaller groups of people who are interested.
Like when preparing for facilities committee, you know, during that, we have a subcommittee that's on spot facilities, and it gets that message out, or having some kind of major curriculum change, like.
Same idea.
Or we had a major curriculum change, people, that then shares that information with parents and community members, that message forward.
Very funny, yeah, very funny.
Would we be open to maybe creating a mailing list out of the community engagement committee, and then go to anyone who should choose to, for their, am interested, and need, if something comes up, and then if we're having a facilities meeting, and we have someone with contract experience, would like to come in and show their experience when it's appropriate?
Makes a lot of sense, because as, as already said, some of these board committees deal with confidential matters, construction committees are good, because we might be talking about critical statements regarding contractors, and whether they're fulfilling their responsibility, we can't discuss that publicly, but on the other hand, there are certain issues relating to construction that are perfectly appropriate to be discussed publicly, so you've got a dual opportunity for the appropriate confidential matters to be discussed in the board committee, and the matters that are, that are umbrella of relating to everything that the community might be interested in relating to, would have, people would have a voice, and they'd be able to participate in the process.
Other, any thoughts? I'm just saying, even if this is a really, but all the issues.
Well, some of these, a lot of these committees already have community members on them, and they do not discuss confidential matters, so the Athletic Advisory Council, the Audit Committee, the, well, as you said, Safety Committee, there's a whole bunch of them, Sustainability Committee, Health and Security Advisory, whatever, yeah, that district.
Maybe we need to review the list and highlight which ones are, include community members, and then public chats, so folks have an opportunity to review it and decide whether they might be interested in participating, can we put this on the website?
True. Do, for the committees, are our agendas prepared, posted anywhere, are they open meetings for the public to, I mean, obviously, the ones that discuss confidential?
They're not typically open meetings, the committee meetings, so like, so there's, like, so for people, like, for instance, like the Audit Committee, you know, you have outside members that are part of that, that affects what's being audited, and that's part of the process, but I see that the whole thing, I don't know.
And that a committee is not a full meeting of the board, so it's not a public meeting, it's more of a work session.
I guess I'm just trying to figure out how many, so I think we're more of a hearing that's a lot of engaged public who are interested in these specific topics, and give them an opportunity to participate besides reaching out to any of us as they can do at any point in time, but I guess what I'm concerned about is, is creating so many subcommittees, all these, you know, what can we do to engage the public and, and keep it from creeping into this, this unmanageable number of, so, that would be my opinion.
No, that's fair, I think we can clean up the list and make it more obvious, I like the ones that would involve community members, and then that community, that community engagement committee would be the place for all of the information sharing, and then I think the topics will come up, fiscal long-range planning would probably be of interest in activities year-round, but then the facility committee would be shorter term, and I think it will come out of that communication, that would be.
Yeah, we've done that in the past, like, in our last project, we created a fully subcommittee from the communications committee, and again, just to try to get deeper word out in terms of the process of, posing, prior to budget, and after the budget, help budget, going, and so, you know, they helped us a lot, which is for sharing the community, but then. the key issues, but then that, you know, so it's, it's wrong, right? But some of the things too, like, I agree with you, Joe, that when you start talking about subcommittees, you can just go on forever, and we just have to be able to manage it. So if it's only, like, things that are only temporary in nature, as, as issues arise for us, you know, we will decide to create committee, address to complete, you know, that we feel is other boards. And so, and in those types of things, like the agenda from something like that, could be posted on the website. So there could be some committees that post their agenda for the minutes in the meeting, especially something like that, that's kind of really addressed a lot of quality issues and, of this. Because people talk, I know about that Communications Committee, people talk about quality, sometimes we, you know, like, I know, that committee would be, we're just going to start right on it, and explaining your concerns, whatever, maybe, just some kind of general problems of interest, as these things develop with the people. So I think that, that's, that's a really good committee, that we can engage a number of people, and also then address specific things as they arise.
A lot of the agendas, how about the agendas, well, the first couple of meetings, we said facilities and budget, that's a kind of a brainstorming session anyway. Is that, the agendas start taking care of themselves as you kind of move through the process, you start deciding which direction you're going with facilities and those kind of things. And I think that the confidential part of the Budget Finance Committee is just that the brainstorming, because the administrators in there, we start talking about what's next year going to look like. If you start talking about program changes, administrator walks in the next day, and somebody says, you're trying to ruin my job, or whatever. You know, all we're doing is just trying to formulate a budget, seeing, you know, what direction we're headed in, what our needs are, and that could affect personnel, and you certainly know a lot of great stressful moments for faculty and staff. In effect, it's just brainstorming. Here's somebody ideas, what would you do in the middle school, and heart deal, and the schools, I think so. That obviously thing, we need to keep that shape, keep there when we start talking about the budget, because we didn't have 70 to 75% personnel and fringe backups when we go through the budget process. And the subcommittees, I didn't, that's fine with that, I sort of kind of, that there's value to that.
There's two, there's two parts of the budget, being 75% personnel, and then the community engagement, who are concerned about programming and tax rates and other things. I think our, our job with the committees would be to find that spot in the middle, right? So we can't always be, these two groups can't always be talking together, but the committee can be that range between the two. So if we're getting all the information that we need, the community is getting the information they need, and yes, there is still that respect for privacy and confidentiality as needed.
I agree with you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Really good point, too.
And I think it's important to point out, the majority of the committees, the Athletic Advisory, Audit, Communications Committee, District Parent Council, Health and Advisory Committee, Safety Committee, Safety Ability Committee, there's just a few where, again, where it is confidential, kind of sensitive personnel issues.
We've covered it. Does anyone have more thoughts or comments? Okay, thank you. Ending off the list, oh, here we go.
Thank you.
Moving to item five, item requiring board action. And A, the superintendent recommends that the Board of, and.
Yes.
Yeah. Superintendent recommends Board of Education approve provisions to the 21 and 22 full-year calendar, and details in here at top of it. Have motion? By Cam, second. Second of my Joe, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Period seven zero. Item B, the superintendent recommends Board of Education approve visions to the 21 and 22 full-year calendar, and details in here at top of it. Have motion? By Cam, second. Second of my Terry, discussion?
What is this one day on June 1st separated from all the other meetings?
Yeah, well, it was just, it was a statement, it's a.
That's enough. If you all have to say it, it's, 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 it's the other part of the honor, for sure.
I think, I think the other item, the other change was the superintendent's conference day, in August.
Just quickly, that is important, to, to move our teachers out, socially emotional burn, trauma, depression. We're doing something on the first days of prior kids providing, we're going to continue to work consulting, unfortunately, she was unable to come on this, we have to schedule, so we have to move it to Friday, Monday. And, and so, what we think is going to be Tuesday, we've got Tuesday, Tuesday. And so, I think it's going to be really beneficial to our teachers as our students, so it's going to be, yeah.
You don't give us any outside.
I was just going to say, those are the only two changes on this calendar, compared to the first one.
Yes.
Just one more comment regarding the calendar in general. With all the troubles we've been having the last couple of years, sometimes there are adjustments, I would appreciate it whenever a change is made in the calendar, they come back to the Board of Education.
Sure.
And little last, what are you, what are your comments?
That, they, because sometimes, sometimes there's need to change the calendar based on emergency, it's checked, all kinds of reasons that it could be changed. I'm not sure we've always brought it back to the Board of Education to adjust the official calendar of the school district, so I think we should.
Anything else on the calendar? All those in favor?
Aye.
Period seven zero, thank you. The superintendent recommends the Board of Education approve the tax rates for the 2021-2020 full year, and details in your agenda and attachments. Move by Paul? Second? Second of my Joe, discussion?
Could the business manager please tell us the difference between the levy and the rate? I saw the rate here, but remind us what the levy was?
The levy is the total amount of taxes to be funded, 24 million, five ninety-six, zero ninety-five. Then if you look to the next, just the one. I put together a slide, if you look on, of actual tax rates to show the history, between the red vertical line and the blue vertical line is what we were estimating last fall at budget, or last spring at budget time, where we thought the tax rates were land, and between the two vertical lines is where we're actually. So we were very close. There was equalization rate changes in each of the three tables. And if I have to protect the equalization rates under the third set of numbers, and in the last column, I forgot to change the date to 21, 22. But in Aurora, it went from 30.25 to 90%, COVID 35%, 34%. Which impact the rate for tax.
That's unusually high of rates, especially the percentage from 35 to 29. I don't think I've ever seen that before.
It's from 30, what, 29?
35 to 34.
Yeah.
And 30.25 to 29.
29, yeah.
Yeah.
I see what you mean, okay. So the, on the other sheet, you sent us electronically, there was a percentage increase in tax rate of 2.6%.
Correct.
The levy, however, was higher than that.
3.81.
3.81. So I just, I just want to summarize the fact that the, that the tax rate increase continues to be reduced each year, and that we've been focusing on trying to do that, and, and it's slowly getting there. So hoping to even this out at around 2%, and we're pretty close.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Period seven zero. Okay, we are moving on to visitor comments. I will ask visitors, I'll make a couple changes to tighten things up a little bit, keep us moving toward the rest of our days. I'd ask everyone, as always, to state your name and address for the district clerk. Please state your topic. Be sure to address your comments to the Board of Education. If your topic is one that has already been raised in recent visitor comments or letters to the board, I would ask that you please provide your additional information succinctly, and as we've decided, please keep your comments two, three minutes or less. Before we get there, a list of emails we have received. I'll run through them, and if anyone has not received them or has questions, I'll follow up with Jackie or with me, and we'll make sure you have the information. A number have come in since our last meeting. Debbie Curl sent us an email about vaccines. JP Martia about filming the point for debate meetings. Jeffrey Dick had about the opening of school questions. I think we had 12 emails from Unmasked New York Kids and Renee Mollad. A thank you note from Jeffrey Dick had, Deb Schmilewitz about her request to participate in committees. Jeffrey Krusen about vaccines, mask policy, and opening of schools. Mohammed Tellmi about T-Mobile project. We have emails informing the Board of Opinions that we do not have to mask, or that we should be mask optional, from Jeffrey Krusen, two from Debbie Curl, two from George Barbary, one from Tammy Dupree, and one from Sarah Rudy Barbary, and one from John and Keith Boner. We have letters in support of continuing masking from Cindy Wattsworth, Rachel Clark, Lauren McKee, William Wattsworth, Mark Zucker, Jed Kramer, Tim McGee, Nicole Zucker, Rachel Silva, and Jessica Whitefield. Late arriving messages regarding vaccines, Plexiglas Unmasked from Tara Harvey. Shana Morcell requests that we adhere to the advice of Dr. Scientists. And one message from the staff from both learning. That's the one you received and read your email.
Except the ones that arrived.
The ones today, so, yes. A month, two emails. Thank you. I would like to caution all board members, we have been getting a number of emails with links to web addresses that may be unknown, many of them, that, that could probably advise us, please don't click any unknown links. Save your schools, don't click unknown links. Okay. That being said, does anyone have comments they would like to share with the board?
My name is Becky Morning, 1415 Oleon Road, South Wales, New York. First of all, I was wondering, when did this meeting become aware to the public in print? These are visitor comments, so I can respond to you candidly. Okay? And I just wondered what policy for the district, you know, for notification and the timing of these meetings so that parents can attend. First of all, thank you to all for allowing public comments today. My first comment today is on behalf of Dr. Anthony Notino. He is the radiologist for the Buffalo Bills. Sent me a letter, a West Austin video copy. Attention Easter Board members, I am writing this letter as a concerned parent to allow face masks in school to be a parental choice. I am a physician, scientist, and published author with an extensive medical background in sports medicine, radiology, and have a Muskel-Skeletal Radiology Fellowship obtained from New York Presbyterian Hospital, Cornell Medical Center, and the Hospital for Special Surgery in New York City. I was also named New York Top Doctor in 2020. I have extensively researched the conclusion to support buy masks serve no health benefits in children. There was also an email sent at the beginning of the meeting around 8:30. If you care to click on the link, he would appreciate that. Obviously, he was unable to make it because of late notice. One of the essential functions of respirations is the elimination of toxins, primarily carbon dioxide. When children wear a mask, it impedes the normal process of removing these harmful toxins. When a child rebreathes his or own, his or her own waste, and cannot get rid of the byproducts, hyperkathemia, high levels of carbon dioxide circulate within their body. These wasteful poisons are detrimental to a child's health, sustaining increase in blood pressure, pro-inflammatory state, and immunosuppression. As a father, I have witnessed my children have an increase in headaches over the pandemic due to continually wearing masks. A study conducted by JAMA Pediatrics in Germany on June 30th, 2021, stated there was a sixfold rise in higher carbon dioxide levels within the blood system than acceptable levels, higher than acceptable levels, from wearing masks. In addition to the damaging physiological effects, there are the many negative psychological effects that should be considered. As educators, you are aware of the increased mental health issues in children today. Therefore, masking will only increase the rising statistics in poor mental health, suicide rates, stress, anxiety, fear, and depression. In addition, it is also essential to discuss the adverse effects of mask-wearing in children with special needs, who often depend on facial expression function. Masking eliminates their opportunities for an exchange of communication and expression, which escalates anxiety and decreases their ability to focus in the classroom. Finally, please consider children who wear glasses. It is impossible for them to concentrate with continually fogged glasses. Let us not forget the increased risk for bacteria that accumulate under the mask, harboring infections due to the dark, moist environment. To conclusion, there is no scientific evidence stating that wearing a face mask has any benefit to decreasing the spread of COVID in Shaiwam. In addition, there are long-term consequences to a child's physical and mental health. Thank you for consideration. Anthony G. Notino, MD.
Thank you. To your, to your earlier comments about your decisions that we're getting, I would like the community to know that we have many board meetings throughout the year, and we often run special Board of Education meetings, the notice is given as is appropriate and required. But we, we, we have to have 7:30 in the morning meetings, just usually not when folks are concerned about pandemic, just to the regular work of the district.
Yes, so, I'm just commenting on that as well. So when scheduling this meeting, the board has a regular board meeting scheduled, and the next board needs to, last week in August. As I was gathering information, I reached out to the board and said, is there a chance that we can be, so that we can share information for, to give them an update. And so, again, I would say that this is not required, and so the late notice is because that's just how it happens. We get information, I try to turn it around as quickly as possible. The seven people here have very busy lives, many of them take time off from work, come in the morning, try to do things in the evening as often as we can. So I just hope that the idea around that, is there's some kind of suspicion or doing this quickly, which is how it happens, it's the nature of what we're dealing with. Last, last year, we typically, we typically schedule about one, one to two board meetings a month. We have anywhere a couple on the agenda around 17 or 18. I think we're over 30 that the board members attended to respond to the ever-changing issues that we were dealing with. And so, any insinuation that this is happening, like, quickly so that people aren't informed or they can't attend, is just, it's just not true. Those insinuations are, I guess, somewhat insulting, I'll be quite honest, because people that are sitting at this table don't need hundreds of hours for the benefit of your children. And so, I think there should be gratitude for the work that they are doing. I know I am very grateful, I'm incredibly impressed with their level of devotion, the amount of time they put in to learn about instruction, and how students engage with each other, the importance of all of those elements that make an educational experience positive. And so, when I hear those types of comments, to be quite frank, is I find them to be insulting. And this is. and misinformed, and I think that that is very problematic for our children. We have a choice, how we move forward. And we can support each other through these very difficult decisions. These are really tough decisions to make. Do I want awareness? Do I want our kids to wear masks? Absolutely not. Right now, they're not. When I come back in September, I'm going to take that information. I'm going to make a recommendation based on best information that I can find. And I will always, and I have devoted the last 30 years of my life to working with kids and I will always do what's interesting. And you may not like it, and I understand that. But the only way we're going to get through this is if we are respectful and supportive. So just wanted to make that comment.
I'd like to also add on to that, that at the last board meeting, one negative part of having our meetings videotaped is that people hear, listen to what they want to hear and then they sign off and then don't listen to it in its entirety. The very end of our last board meeting, we discussed what we've always discussed at the end of every board meeting is the items of information. We talk about the next regularly scheduled board meeting. At the last meeting, we had a discussion about how our meeting was August 25th and it was a month out. And we always know that in August, there's new hires, so we have to have a meeting to approve these new hires. So we actually did discuss at the last meeting that there was going to have to be another meeting. We didn't know when, but Brian said be prepared, there will be another meeting, I just don't know when. So I caution folks who are listening and not coming and staying for the whole time meeting, if you're listening to it, listen to it until the end, until we literally have finished talking. Because we very often, again, for items of information, pass on information that you might want to hear. And I think that's where a lot of misinformation comes from. I've heard many times the last couple of months, I didn't know that, that wasn't said at the meeting. It was said, things are being said. You have to listen from the beginning until the end, until Dennis or whomever signs off, because that's where you may find the information. And as Brian said, it's very disturbing to have people out there making negative comments about the things that we are trying to do that are of best interest for not just your kid, but everyone's kid and every employee in this district and every community member in East Aurora. So I mean, I think people get into my kid, my kid. We have to think, I don't have that luxury. I have to think about everybody. And as the seven of us sit behind this board, that's what we have to do as well. And it's not easy. So again, Brian, I thank you very much for saying what you said and I greatly appreciate the support.
We're moving on to the next. Oh, and I'm sorry, can you call in? No, did you want to state your name?
Oh, my name is Linda Aven.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, Cindy Wattsworth. Is it, I'm sorry.
You're good, go ahead.
Great. So good morning, board and Superintendent Russ. And thank you so much for your service on behalf of our children and our families in East Aurora. I can appreciate the countless hours and the trying year that you guys have had this past 2020, 2021 and possibly into 2022. So on behalf of myself and some very concerned parents, I thank you. I just plainly want to say, my family moved to East Aurora because we learned that this was an excellent school district. And so far, everything that we have like heard through third parties or, you know, directly through our own communications or our own experience with principal, outgoing principal, the outgoing principal and the incoming principal has been really positive. So we are really, you know, like looking forward to being part of this community and staying here and raising our children here and educating our children here. I applaud and I refer to my letter, to our letter, which we sent to your attention yesterday. I would kindly ask that if you haven't read it already, that you can choose so. But that letter very, you know, simply states, let's keep what we've been doing that's been working going. Let's keep our masks on our children. The reality is like Superintendent Russ, that none of us want to see these things on our faces. They're uncomfortable, they hide our smiles, they really don't like allow us to like show our personalities. And, you know, nobody wants to wear them. But, you know, people that are far smarter than I am, that are in science-based education are seeing that these things were. And the reality is that we saw in the low numbers and in the containment of cases at our schools, particularly in this district, that we were able to contain cases. Probably in large part because of the safety measures that you adopted last year. So why change something that, you know, is working? Let's keep masks on our kids. In fact, the American Academy of Pediatrics, which you've often seen cited, which is comprised of 67,000 pediatrics in the country, is specifically saying, let's keep masks on our kids. And their mission statement is saying health, education and social well-being of children. So thank you for your time.
And there are others like Russell White?
Sam Cardo, 1494 Boys Road. Once again, I'd like to also thank everyone on the board for thinking about our children. And for me, I know they're my life, my children. And I love all of my children's friends, everybody. As for their health, I would love to see no mandates, but letting the parental decisions come through and having an option. If you want your child masked at school, have a mask. If you don't, let's see how it goes. If there's a problem, you have that opportunity to mandate mask later on if something arises. But the force of mandate, I'm not paid. That's my opinion. I want to say thank you once again.
Thank you.
Hi, Jessica Quiddick, 149 Center Street. I agree with Sam, I think the parents should have a say in if they want their kids masked or not. I am not, mask if you want, don't mask, doesn't matter. I, we've had COVID in our home, my husband was hospitalized, we lived it. I own a business, it's run my life forever. I'm a long-hauler, so I have all the fun stuff that COVID has brought. I understand every single angle of COVID. I'm, would ju, and I just want to kind of address that Terry had said how you guys do have the weight on your shoulders of making a decision for every child. And the problem is you only see them in school. You don't see what's happening at home. You don't see what the whole world has done, you know? Everywhere they go, it's a worry, I mean this, I mean that. I mean, we have had it hit every part of our lives. And my kids just want to be normal. And if they choose to wear a mask, if my husband and I choose to wear a mask, my husband's a nurse, then we will. But if we choose not to have them, they're vaccinated. And what was the point of getting the vaccine if I was going to live my life in fear of them having, going anywhere, being in this mask? I've done everything we can to keep them safe, but they have to start living. And I think as a parent, I deserve that right to say, go to school with a mask or go to school without a mask? And no judgment anywhere. If you want your kid masked up, gloved up, full hazmat suit, go at it. But if you don't, don't. You know, I think we have to start living again. And I just really hope we make those decisions for the parents, be able to help you making this decision. Because you're not in the halls, you only see what the kids are dealing with at school. And I just want that to be part of your decision. All right, thank you.
Rachel Clark, 140 Jane Road, West Hall. We are new to the district. Last year was our first year, I have a third grader and an incoming kindergartner. And I was part of the letter that is in support of continuing the mitigation efforts of wearing a mask for the upcoming school year. And I understand and I really do honor the opinions of those that have spoke already. I think one key element that's being left out is the fact that those 12 and under do not have the ability to be vaccinated. They cannot make that choice, the parents cannot make that choice for them as of yet. I think we are knowing that we are in a substantial community transmission county as of today, as of yesterday, as of last week, that with a positivity rate of 34% right now, if this were to have happened anytime last year, everyone would be wearing masks. What they know about the transmissibility of the Delta variant is that those that are vaccinated and unvaccinated can both be spreading at the same rate early on. I also, I am a health professional. I do have a degree in public health, I come from a family in public health. And I do follow guidance for those that are above me in terms of health leaders and following all the guidance from the CDC, the New York State of Health, the Department of your county, Department of Health as well. And at this time, I do know, see that they are all referring to the CDC guidelines. And in the CDC guidelines, what is being said is that if you're in a substantial transmission zone, you need to be wearing a mask indoors, whether you're vaccinated or not. And I just hope that the district, I want to applaud, thank you so much. We've had a wonderful experience last year, your hard work is sincere. We are sincerely grateful for all of that. But I do believe that we can't pick and choose the guidelines. We can't pick that we're returning in person based on these CDC measures and guidelines, and here they are, but yet leave out the guidelines of returning with masks as well. That is from all avenues right now what they're saying. So I do hope and am optimistic. And I do appreciate your stance at following those top-down measures. And I am optimistic that this will be the case and when the transmission rates decrease and they're back to low, maybe we can, you know, go back to how things were this summer or early on this summer, because everyone, I think, felt a sigh of relief that things were returning to normalcy. But unfortunately, they aren't now. And with the Delta variant, we have to do what's right for our children and our community. Thank you.
Does anyone else? I'll keep mine brief because I think a lot of the statements that I have already been made. My name's Dawn Bonham, 283 Rainwood Court. I respect all the opinions that the families hear, respect the opinions of those in the board considering the risks as well. I believe that parents are in a position to assess the risk, make what is best for the children. And that's what I would hope that this fiscal board determines as well, so they can make decisions. And if the Delta variant poses more risk to the children, I'm sure you'll see more parents who want to mask their children or take any other measures to protect their children and others within their household or even outside of that. But again, mandates, I think, can be harmful because we're letting politicians to help parents, help to raise their children. And the parents that are closer to the children, if you truly assess the risk, make those best decisions for their family and children. Is there anyone else?
I'm John Rhodes, I live on Grove Road, West Hall. I just had a, I had a kind of a clarifying question and a comment. The question probably for Mr. Russ is, what is the isolation and quarantine going to look like this year going forward? Is it going to be the same policy as last year in terms of, say, isolating a whole sporting team if there was, you know, one exposure? I don't know if I have an opinion, I'm just curious. And then the comment was, you mentioned community engagement. I personally, one thing that would move in the direction of community engagement would be moving executive sessions to the end of the meeting so we'd have a predictable start time for these meetings for the audience members. It's, you know, I've seen other boards do that and it seems to work fine. And it'd be nice not to keep people just sitting in chairs for power.
Thank you. Your point is well taken. My new role, I'm taking effort to keep everyone who's sitting in the chairs. With your question, I would, right, I would.
True, you would say at this point in time, I haven't heard anything that has changed in regard to response to quarantine in terms of the length of time. Maybe again, once the Department of Health changes what particular case they make a determination, that's really out of our hands and as far as I know, that has not changed.
Right, position, one, Anne Mary Lane. I just want to say, mask, no mask. I just want my kid in school all day, every day. So whatever you guys can do to make that happen, one, Anne Mary Lane will support the choice. I mean, I saw the difference in my daughter from sitting in front of a computer to a couple of days a week. And I mean, the social well-being and whatnot, I think the kids will benefit from being in each other's company and camaraderie and relationship development and everything else. I just want to see my kids school. So whatever you guys can do to make that happen, I'm all in.
Thank you, Mr. Russ. Yep, please do that. And. Aaron. I'm about to follow those. I don't know. I can support people in this district who are mindful enough to be vaccinated. And, but I would agree with what the gentleman just said. Problem of priority for me and for my family is for the kids to be in person, in school. I had my two parents' daughters full remote last year. You know, for reasons actually kind of unrelated to the scheduling. And it was hard, it was really hard. And I know it works really well for some people, but it was a real struggle for our family. And they hopefully, it's worth it to change for them. And you know, like, that is what is stealing their childhood and making them struggle and then losing their friends, not wearing a square of fabric on their face. Like, that is not a thing. I mean, yeah, it's annoying, our lack is also annoying, but not the thing that is, that is perfect about it. It's not the thing that they're struggling with, it's not the thing that sends a cry at night. Right? Not being in their school, not having their friends around. Those are the things that are important. And also, I wanted to speak to the, the, I do understand that there's a lot of but I do actually totally understand that. But masking is something that very much affects the people around you. When the mask mandates first came out, the guidelines were like, you know, you wear a mask for other people. It's not for your protection, it's so you don't spread your, to everybody else. And, you know, obviously, it is showing now that the mask does offer use of protection as well. Its main protection is still for other people. So your choice not to mask your child. And it affects the children who can't be vaccinated because they have issues for being vaccinated. And, you know, with the new variant, it might even affect the kids who are vaccinated. And if our goal is to have the kids in school and learning and socializing and doing the things they need to do, then like the inconvenience of that, I just feel like can't be the thing that we're focused on. Thank you. Thank you, Ross. Is there anyone else who would like to build the board yet?
My name's Maggie. Oh, thank you for giving me that fantastic speech. I just want to say that don't forget the mental health aspect that was dropped during the last year. I think in all the worries about the mandates and what we're going to do for where we should wear and carry and not use their lockers and carry their backpacks. And it was, it was a significant rise in data to support that. On the other hand, there's data and scientific evidence to support whatever side of masking or not masking you're on. You know, the CDC makes recommendations, you should make recommendations, you find doctors that make recommendations, everybody has something to say about both sides. So whether you believe in something or you don't, there's scientific evidence in force for both. Nobody just knows enough at this point. I do think that the masks are detrimental. They do play into mental health. When my son comes home with open wounds on both sides of his mouth and I can't get them to heal because he has to put that mask on again every day. That is heartbreaking, explain that now. Now, all three of my kids are vaccinated. You know what they say to me? I'm not wearing a mask in September. Okay, but you are because I told Harvey why and we explain the science and we explain the community. You know, the concerns and looking out for others. That was their point in getting it. Now, we got it because we're going to England and we have to have it. So that's why all five. Now, we got it because we're going to England and we have to have it, so that's why all five plus have it. But hopefully we're right. But having said that, I do think that mental health and well-being still needs to be a huge part of the conversation. I do think that the wording is not mandates anymore, the wording is recommending. So if there's recommendations, in my mind, you make a recommendation to me, I get to choose, I make a choice. Recommendations are choices, parents should have choices. Some of the news commentators said, oh, it's going back to the school district, the school board is going to decide. But that puts someone in control, that gets the parents' hands. Parents have a say. No, we still don't. So I think that's why parents be saying, and I would just ask you, that as soon as they do so, please make masks on. Let them have that choice. I know that the superintendent from Niagara County, or Niagara Falls, wherever he is, he is starting off. He sits at your desk, he takes his mask off. He told his parents, we have to change that, we have to change that. But that's how we're going to start off school, at least we're starting off. As you know, it's kids' lives. My son's asking me, can I use the locker? I don't know. The anxieties that were surrounding last year's restrictions are starting again. He asked me, okay, because they're going to rise. They're going to rise every year for the next 10 years. COVID's not going away. And it does need to be normalized, as another superintendent said, that in the press that said that was an alarming statement. How is that an alarming statement? COVID's not ever going away, it's part of our world. We will all manage it, we'll manage it every year. We're going to have cases rise every year. And when they say it's a significant rise from zero, okay, yeah, I guess it's going to come from zero. I just, I would like to start to have the discussion, that this is part of our world, is what kind of happens.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments and your time this morning.
Can you talk just a little bit about how the convention?
Sure.
If I was able to, if you want.
Okay. I can land on it. Now, in light of everything, I'm glad that I was going to say. I'm hoping they'll make it virtual, and actually they'll give everyone a chance to maybe kind of without the responsibility of, we added to. See if there's any more guidance. Any other items to come? Hey, I would remind you all that we have our next scheduled board meeting on August 25th, right here in the Hall of Purpose Room. The executive session for one hour. At 6 o'clock, the Western New Law Conference, obviously underway right now. It's supposed to be discussed next time. They have posted your journal. Moved by Kim, second. Seconded by Judy. All in favor? Thank you all very much.
We'll send my question into that.
Obviously, yes.